Evening, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being November 24th, 2015. This meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary. The matters listed below on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Like to first start off, if everybody could please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to acknowledge our two school committee members, or soon-to-be school committee members, both being here today at the meeting. We appreciate their presence, Joe Amico and John Olimpio. Thank you both for being here. I know we all look forward to working with you. And approval of minutes?
Motion received and approved, minutes of November 10th, 2015.
Second.
Per the motion by Mr. McGinnis, seconded by Mr. Rozignol, for approval of the November 10th, 2015 regular school committee meeting minutes. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next item, approval of bills.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2879 in the amount of $63,596.43, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Per the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rozignol, for approval of warrant 2879. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. President.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2880 in the amount of $745,952.92, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you for the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rozignol, for approval of warrant 2879. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. President.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2880 in the amount of $745,952.92, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you for the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rozignol, for approval of warrant 2880. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. President.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2881 in the amount of $212,022.06, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you for the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rozignol, for approval of warrant 2881. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. President.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the MSBA Higgins Project?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We held the monthly Higgins School Building Committee meeting on the 19th, that was last Thursday, and we have a lot of new developments. As of Wednesday, the heat is actually on in the building, so that interior work can now continue forward. Cable trays are in, and they are ready to pull in the line, which will hook up the electricity to the building. It runs on a different type of a hookup at the moment because of construction. But they're presently having operational conversations about how the various components of the building are actually going to operate. In other words, what has gone on now, up to this point, have been construction conversations, and then there were operational conversations kind of paralleling. Now, everything is pulling together, and the systems are actually coming on, will be coming online. They will be powering up in four to six weeks. The reason that the, I'm sorry, the reason that the heat is, the heat is going into the building right now is temporary heat, run by the propane. That is so that the systems in the building will not be used until the school is completed. And that's because of the work that's going on. You don't want to affect the actual heating units, or the air conditioning units that are in the building. And that is to extend the years on the equipment. In two weeks, lockers will be going in. A sample classroom should be completed by, actually probably by this week. It might be next week, but it should be this week. And right now, the building is 58% complete, and within one month, the exterior will be complete. The glass is all there to be placed into the window sills. They have to hold off on a couple of spots where they're still doing some construction, but within the next couple of weeks, you will go by and the entire exterior of the building will be completed. At each of the meetings, we have the benefit of a slideshow. It's very interesting. Our owner's project management company provides the services of Rob St. Laurent, and he is on duty, it seems, 24 hours a day. And some of the photos this week showed how the interior gardens are already being constructed. The sidewalks in the two courtyards were put into, they were poured. The drainage for those gardens has gone in. They're going to be building some raised, I'm not going to say raised beds, but raised areas for the drainage to make it better. As far as the use of those gardens, they're going to be used for science and for ecology. They're part of the, part of the actual, not just the structure, but part of the curriculum. And they've been designed with that in mind. They're also going to be going through and completing the library right now. That's, all of the glass is in the library, but the interior walls will be going up. So, the last areas that will be completed will be the gym and the auditorium. Presently, the gym is working out well as a staging room, where deliveries can be made, and then the supplies and the materials that are needed in other areas can be stored there until they are taken up to the various locations in the classroom building. So it is moving along very nicely, and you will notice some big changes within the next couple of weeks. And it will be all buttoned up, and work's going to continue right straight through the winter. And they were very encouraged about the progress of the work, and very encouraged about the savings that they're able to realize for us, just by a lot of efficiencies that have been built into the systems and the meetings and the schedules that they have. They're very strict about their schedules, and they're sticking to them.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Great report. If there's no objection, I'd like to go to the superintendent's report. We have somebody in the audience that's been waiting patiently, and if there's no objection, I'd like to go to superintendent's report, which I think is going to be very brief, right?
Excellent.
But if there's no objections, I'd like to go to superintendent.
We have had a request, as we have had in the past, for a waiver fees for the Relay for Life, and I would like to recommend that we do so.
Move to follow the recommendation of the superintendent?
Second.
You had a big speech, Alan. Didn't you have a big speech prepared? I'm sorry. So the motion was made by Mr. McGinnis, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mr. Rozignol.
Yes, through the Chair, to the Chair. We are unable to waive the
Utility?
The utility fee, energy fee, the $50 fee, but I would like to pay that on family members' behalf.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. You've done that in the past, thank you. So we have a motion before us. Roll call vote, please.
She likes to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alan, would you like to say anything, Alan? Would you like to come up?
I'd like to.
Oh, please, come on up. Please, come on up.
Mr. Rozignol, I was wondering if you'd like to pay my energy bill as well. One's enough.
Alan, welcome. If you'd just introduce yourself, please.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Ellen Nager-Barden. I am the volunteer event lead for the Relay for Life. I just want to say that the 2016 relay is, we're going back to an overnight. We did try the one-day event last year, which went well, but people want that overnight feeling. So it's going to be on June 10th, Friday, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Saturday morning. So people can still get out and do their activities on Saturday. So I want to say thank you for waiving all the fees, and thank you, Mr. Rozignol, and we hope to see you all there.
Great. And we're getting together shortly.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. No.
You want me to complete it?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a communication from Comcast, letting us know that they will continue to provide free internet service for our schools and our library, and I would like to accept this communication with gratitude.
Do we need a vote on that?
It's a donation.
It's a donation.
No, it's just a notification that the services will continue in kind, so I
Yeah, it does say that the company's high-speed internet contribution has an annual value of more than $8,900, so I think we probably should
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent and accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Dunn, did you have a comment on?
No.
No, that was yes, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 On that motion, we send a letter?
Will do. Mr. Mayor, I have two other items, but would you like me to wait until the appropriate time, or do you want to just continue?
No, let's go forward, please.
So, I did want to mention a couple of items. As you know, we have a foreign language trip coming up, going to Italy in the spring. And I am concerned about any trip going overseas, international overseas. My concerns center around putting American kids in a group in Europe for any reason. Losing control over airplanes that originate from Europe coming to the United States, and just the general issue of the United States State Department issuing a travel alert for all Americans basically everywhere. I know and understand and appreciate and sympathize with the fact that we can't stop living. On the other hand, the school department doesn't necessarily have to be in the business of giving its informata to an overseas trip for high school kids at this particular time. It's very difficult not to act now, because the later you wait, the more people lose, the more money people lose. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. I have met with Abby Gore, the person who will be supervising this trip. We had a very good, solid discussion with the high school principal as well. I have requested a meeting this week, and will be having a meeting this week with the parents of all of the students involved in going on this trip. They're about 23. And I will make my decision very quickly thereafter as to whether or not to cancel the trip or to wait. I do want the public to know that I don't believe the situation gets any better by waiting. I'm not sure what waiting actually does. The question really is whether or not to allow the trip to go or not. ISIS doesn't go away by waiting. If we have six months of quiet, that doesn't mean that we won't have three weeks of chaos. So, I am contemplating, I am thinking about it. We do have one city that has already canceled their very same trip with a different company to Italy. And we have six or seven other communities that have chosen to wait up to this point, that are also going to Italy. I will have my decision within a week or so, and whatever that decision is, that will be the decision. Any comments on that? The second issue is equally controversial with some folks, and that is the lockdown that occurred last week. We did have a reason to lock down the schools. There was some information that we had a person of interest on the loose in the PBD area. We weren't sure exactly what schools were involved, but we had a general location. I chose to lock down five elementary schools and the Higgins Middle School. The issue for the parents that called and were, took issue with the way things happened was not so much the lockdown itself, but whether or not parents should be notified earlier on in the process. Most parents that I talked to, and there were about 15 emails and or phone calls, that suggested that they wanted to be notified immediately. That is the issue at hand. I want the school committee to know that the procedures that are in place do not mention parents at all, quite frankly, in PBD. None of the procedures mention when or whether to contact parents. In other cities and towns that I have looked at, Everett, for example, has emboldened that parents, in this case of a lockdown, will be notified only after the reason for a lockdown has occurred. The problem is that, and we have debriefed with the principals on this issue only, I will be debriefing with the mayor and the chief of police next week. The problem is that this couldn't have occurred at a worse time. I can understand why parents were emotional about this, because it occurred close to dismissal. So by not notifying parents, parents got very concerned about buses being delayed, "Where is my child?", and so many other things that run through the thoughts and minds of parents, especially of young children. And I certainly understand, sympathize, and sympathize with those points. The reason that most school systems do not notify parents early on in the process, the reasons are twofold. One, it is typical of, especially parents of younger children, once they see the word "lockdown" to go to the school. "I want to be, I want to get my kid, or I want to be close to my kid." We cannot have that. That puts parents actually in danger, because whatever it is that's going on at or near the school is problematic. We can't have more people coming to a problematic situation. And that is typical of the behavior of some, at least some, parents. During a situation like that, and since we will be in lockdown, we do not acknowledge, nor will we allow, any parents to come into the building. Some parents become irate, and that becomes a secondary problem to the problem that we're already dealing with. A second issue is that for parents who see the word "lockdown" in any communication and don't choose to come to the school, many choose to call either the school or central office, both of which are a bad idea, because we're trying to keep lines open for issues of emergency in dealing with police, fire, or other emergency personnel that we have to talk to in the immediate time period. So those are the reasons that school systems choose not to notify parents immediately. I can't promise that in a similar situation at the same time of day, that the policy will, my policy will change. I can only promise you that I have, I promised everybody, and I did return every phone call, I believe that I talked to every parent except one, and we did play phone tag. I did return every email, and some emails that came to me that left phone numbers, I called them in return. I had some very productive conversations with most people. I did promise every one of them that I would have conversations around this issue with the principals. That is done. The principals are unanimous in that they are happy with the procedures of lockdown and shelter in place. They don't want to change any of that. Some principals would give at least some listen to, an exception to the rule type thing, depending upon the time of day, to an earlier notification to parents. The reasoning behind that was that if parents are already coming to the school to pick up their children, and it's that time of day, a notification to parents to keep them away might be more helpful than not. So we'll certainly continue to discuss that, and that will be part of the conversation that I will have, as I promised everybody, to have a debriefing with the mayor and the chief of police. The chief of police also has to have significant input into this process, because it is his people that are most responsible for keeping the area to the school, if it's in trouble, safe. I would like to end this conversation, Mr. Mayor, by saying that our people, and I mean by our people, our staff, our administration, our secretaries, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our children acted as well and as professionally as we could ever hope in a situation like this. Obviously, kids get scared, doesn't matter what age you are. But we had a tremendous response by every school, by every teacher, by every paraprofessional, by every staff member, by every principal. They acted appropriately, they acted quickly, and most importantly, they acted in the best interest of kids, to make sure the kids were safe. So I would like to publicly thank all of the folks involved in the school system who handled this situation so well. And I would like to give a special thanks to the police department that did their very best to keep us informed with the information that they had at hand, and we will continue to work together as partners in any situation that threatens our children. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Levine, and thank you for your work that day. It was a very trying moment. It was a very fluid situation, different information, and I want to thank you for your leadership during that time. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Levine, thank you very much for explaining exactly why a Connect Ed message didn't go out, or usually wouldn't go out during a lockdown situation. I know we probably, all of us have spoken with parents or were contacted by parents who were, they were upset that they weren't notified immediately. And it makes sense that you wouldn't be able to send out a Connect Ed message until you know exactly what's happening. And as you said, this couldn't have happened at a worse time of the day because of the dismissal. Some of the questions that did come up, though, one of them was, people have asked if there is a quicker method as opposed to Connect Ed. And that I did not have an answer to. They were talking about social media, Facebook, or Twitter. One thing I did find out, and I thought this was very interesting, I ended up speaking with a member of your staff today, we bumped into each other, and I asked this question. 6,200 calls went out, 26 were not completed, which meant that the message could not be left. 25 have been corrected. There is one telephone number that they cannot get, an accurate number for that student. That amazed me, hearing those numbers and knowing how many phone calls went out and actually reached people. Now, I know some people were very upset that they went home and got the message. Do we have a mechanism on our emergency forms where people can list a primary call, and they could say, "Call me on my cellphone", as opposed to the home phone? Okay.
Yes, we do.
And I know the staff worked very diligently to get the numbers that were provided into the system. Those are the numbers we all put on our emergency form at the very beginning of the year, because here it is, you know, November, and 6,200 phone calls went out, and only 25 were not, 26 were not accurate, and 25 have not been corrected. If someone wanted to change their phone number, what would be the mechanism? Should they send a note to the principal, or?
Kara, the easiest way to change a phone, change an emergency card would be through the school, I would imagine, through the school.
Through the school, okay. So if they, if they would prefer to get a phone call on a cellphone, then they should notify the school?
Easy to do.
Very good, okay. And then, question a parent had, some people were upset that their children were texting them from the school. I was surprised that these were elementary school kids that had a phone and were texting their parents. I know from past experience with these issues, that one of the concerns is that the students need to be focused on what's going on in the classroom, that we don't want to alarm people unnecessarily. And there are other reasons why students were told, "Don't use your phones." I know that we used to have a list, I don't know if it's still in effect, but I remember a lot of reasons why.
Through the Chair. That's still in effect, and I would say that we were pretty good on that percentage, but we weren't perfect. There were a couple of other things we weren't perfect on, one of which was, I gave a directive to the principals to announce over the intercom that the school itself was, schools itself were safe and not under direct threat, so that teachers and kids would feel better, even though they were under lockdown. That is not a procedure that should be done under lockdown. The intercom system should not be used under any circumstances. So I think we all have to get better at, in refreshing, starting with me, refreshing ourselves as to what the proper procedures are. Most schools and most people followed the procedures exactly. Some didn't, some it was my fault, and we'll take a look at that and make sure that, as a group, we revisit this whole process, so that we know exactly what to do the next time in each location.
Okay. And if you could bear with me, there was, this also came up at parent advisory board, just want to make sure that I addressed many, the parent advisory board had many of the same questions, obviously, as they represent the parents, so they brought those forward, and you've answered those. Just give me one second. Actually, that really, it ran the same. These were questions that folks had submitted to me, the actual representatives. They did want to make sure that it was being discussed, and I did explain that you would do an after-event review along with the police, and that these are done in conjunction with the police, you know, giving you directives as well, working, working side by side with them. So they would be bringing some of that information back to their individual schools. These came through emails, actually. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Dr. Levine, were we in lockdown or shelter in place at that time?
We were supposed to be in lockdown. I gave the directive to be in lockdown, because at that time, the information that I had was that we did not know if the person of interest was armed. Soon as I had that information, I chose lockdown. In debriefing and in the information that we got later on, we could have been and probably should have been in shelter in place, which would have been a much easier and much less frightening experience for everybody. But with the information that we had at the time, I chose the more conservative approach.
Thank you. And one other question, while we're on the subject, this was not one of the schools that was impacted, although busing was late due to the fact. The Burke School, we've discussed before that their lockdown procedures cannot be followed properly. Since we replaced the windows, they have not had shades put in. We did discuss this. Could we get on the next agenda, or as soon as possible, a cost to put those shades in? Because that is a huge factor in lockdown. And I do know that, well, did we get an update? I know the police do a walkthrough and give a report, if there's any other schools that are missing any of those type of window treatments, or anything that is required for the lockdowns, if we could get those up to date and get a cost?
Sure. Be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Thank you, Dr. Levine.
You're welcome.
Next, I know if we could go back to continued business to community service, Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to thank Dr. Levine and Mrs. Mertag for their hard work on developing this protocol, if you will. This is something that I think will benefit all of our students in one way, shape, or form, whether they're heading off to college, or whether they just want to be a better citizen. I actually told Dr. Levine this story a couple of days ago. When I was 16, 15, my father was really big into Special Olympics, and the first couple of Saturdays, it was every Saturday in the summer months, so he would, in the beginning, I'll say drag me there, kicking and screaming, and me not wanting to go. And I realized that after going a couple of times, I was actually the one grabbing him and pulling him to Special Olympics, because I enjoyed it so much. And I think that's one of the things, and one of the reasons why I really wanted to see this move forward. You don't realize what you can get out of doing community service until you're sometimes forced to do it, sometimes encouraged to do it, but until you do it, you get more out of it than you put into it. So I know this has been a long time coming. We've only tried to get this off the ground for about two, three years. So I'm glad this is coming to fruition. I know there was a little bit of hesitation And I think that's one of the things, and one of the reasons why I really wanted to see this move forward. You don't realize what you can get out of doing community service until you're sometimes forced to do it, sometimes encouraged to do it, but until you do it, you get more out of it than you put into it. So I, I know this has been a long time coming. We've only tried to get this off the ground for about two, three years, so I'm glad this is coming to fruition. I know there was a little bit of hesitation on Mr. Buckley's part in the beginning, and I know his response, I believe, when he came before us a while ago was, "Well, 80% of the students are already doing it." And I don't disagree with him, I agree with him wholeheartedly that 80% are doing it, but now this is a way to quantify it, and to help students that are going on to college use that as their resume to move forward into college. So I, I can't thank you enough for drafting this proposal and getting this off the ground and moving this forward. So, thank you.
Through the chair. You're welcome, Mr. Rosignol, I appreciate it, but all I did really, Kara and I met with Mr. Buckley, and he enthusiastically embraced the idea early on this summer, and worked very, very hard with his staff and a bunch of teachers as well to get this crafted for, I had given him a deadline of January 1st, and he has met that deadline, so I, I would like to take the opportunity, if I may, to thank Principal Buckley and his administrative staff, as well as any and all of the teachers and guidance counselors. I know that Maria Ferry was involved and will be involved in the crafting and what will be the implementation of this community service program. I would also like to say that although I don't think I had one particular or specific incident in my life that created a need to reach out to other people, my mother and father were role models for kindness and taught me how important it is to help others, particularly those in need. So the idea of a community service program could not be better stated by you, and, and the, the benefit is much stronger to the person giving the community service than that, those receiving it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Definitely, you know, for community services, I said this earlier, making it a requirement for all students in our school our size is what I have, not issues, but concerns.
Reservations.
Yes. Is it a requirement for all of our students to graduate, to participate in the?
Through the chair. Through the chair. This will be a, a requirement to meet a minimum of 10 hours over the span of a four-year career, and it's being implemented in a gradation of freshmen, starting with the freshman class. So it won't be a graduation requirement until the freshman class becomes seniors.
Forty, forty hours?
No, it says 15, 16.
Mr. Chair, hi, Mr. Rosignol.
Through the chair for clarification. My understanding is it's going to be 40 hours, but it's going, the first class that it will impact is the graduating class of 19. It's going to start in 15 with just the freshman, so it's not going to be systemic initially, it's going to start with the freshman class.
10 hours a year, I should have said.
Yeah, starting in January, and so that class will have the requirement as of 2019.
So the seniors, juniors, and sophomores of this year?
Are scot-free.
Okay. And there is no waiver from a parent to have their child not participate in this because this is a requirement?
Correct.
And how do we address our students with special needs, some 501s, some other issues that, difficulty in participating in this program?
Through the chair. Many provisions will be made for students who have unique circumstances, and no student will be hurt who have unique circumstances, whether they be special needs students or others. Mr. Buckley and his staff have committed to creating a number of community service opportunities in school, both before, during, and after the school day, and Maria Ferry will do a great job with her staff in creating a number of alternative community service placements for any kids that otherwise might have difficulty securing one.
Would the principal have the authority to waive any hours that was not met?
Through the chair. That hasn't been discussed. It's certainly a, in, in my opinion, the principal, having been an old high school principal for 20 years, I used my magic wand freely, so I think that the principal, with common sense, good judgment, has the authority to do a whole lot of things, including, in certain unique circumstances, waiving a requirement like this.
Certainly, we'd like to see that, because there's so many different circumstances that come up through a child's life from senior, from a freshman to the senior year. Loss of life in their families, illness, injuries, things of that nature.
If I, if I may, through the chair, just a point of information. There's going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Levine, there'll be a hierarchy of follow-through with this. It will be, first line, if you will, will be the guidance department, so they'll know any issues that the student is going through with an oversight of Mrs. Ferry, and then on, over her would be Mr. Buckley. So I think that would encompass any unforeseen situations that may arise in a child's development over the high school years.
And does this affect the budget that we need to add on to any staff to maintain and guide this?
Through the chair, no. The responsibility for this program is spread through a number of different people that we already have on staff.
And again, I'll end this, that I'm a solid believer in community service. My two daughters participated throughout the years of life here in Pevydy, from middle school and all the way through college years, to participate in community service, so I'm a big believer in it. I just want to make sure we have safeguards in place. When you make it a requirement for a student to graduate, it's just one more step that I'd not want to see a student not be able to graduate because of 1% one credit on a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That, actually, one of my concerns in reading through the, the protocol and everything was, I didn't see anything that spoke to any type of a disagreement if a student participated in some type of community service, but then it was deemed not to be adequate. Is, has there been any, any thought into any type of a procedure for that? If, you know, again, who is the ultimate obiter of whether someone did do the, did, did perform adequate community service?
Through the chair. So I, I would assume that any issue of conflict would follow the same path in, in the school system that any other issue would follow, and ultimately, the obiter at the school level would be the principal. So if it got to that point, it would be the principal. There's always an appeal out of the building to the superintendent's office, if need be, and in this case, since it's program, there could even be an appeal to the school committee.
Okay, we may need to put that into, into writing just so that people have that.
Be happy to do that, sure.
And just one, one other thing would be that, as far as, are students going to get prior approval before they do specific community service?
Through the chair. Yes, they'll be filling out a form, and the guidance counselor, or people like Maria Ferry, will be taking a look at the community service requirement, placement that the student has listed, and give their imprimatur or not on that kind of, yeah, so kids will know upfront.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Rosignol, all set?
Do you need a motion to implement this starting in January?
Well, I-
Where it's a program?
That would be nice. I would, since it's an accredited program, yes, I would like that.
I'd like to make that motion to follow the directive of the superintendent and initiate and establish community service as a requirement.
Second?
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mr. Chair?
You're saying this is only for the freshmen?
Correct.
Of this year?
Correct.
And is there a deduction of hours because it's half, almost half the year? Not many, but?
Through the chair. We could certainly make that allowance.
Like eight hours, seven hours.
We could certainly make that allowance.
Okay, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you. This is an initiative that you brought forward when you were campaigning on your initial term as mayor, and I'm glad to see Mr. Rosignol follow through, and this committee follow through with it, and thank Dr. Levine for providing us with the guidance and your experience and the document that you have so that we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, and thank you to Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please. Oh, Mrs. Dunn?
It's just, I just feel badly that the other, I, I wouldn't say for the seniors because I think that it would be too much to request it, but I, I feel badly that the juniors and sophomores aren't going to have the chance to participate in this. And I know, as you said, we've got 80% of the kids up there participating in community service, but I understand why you're starting with the freshmen, I just hate to see an opportunity go by for the sophomores and juniors as well.
So through the chair. That's a great point. The sophomores, juniors, and seniors will not be frozen out of this, they will just not be required to do it. So the community service placements that we develop, for example, there'll be a very strong bond between the high school and Haven from Hunger. Any student who would like to participate in that, whether it's required or not, will be allowed to do so, and encouraged to do so.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, committee members. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Our next item is the RFP for the after-school program. Anything to report on that, Mr. Levine?
Yes, through the chair. We had an extremely productive meeting today, Mr. Kenniston and City Purchasing Agent Dan Dusset. I want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Kenniston's and Mr. Dusset's guidance in how to craft a document that we think is appropriate for the RFP. I believe within two weeks, or the next school committee meeting, I will have a draft, will have had a draft to you already by that time, that will reflect, I think, most of the concerns that you have talked about at this table. I know that we've talked about the possibility of morning programming. We have a lot of interest in, in morning programming from our parent community and from principals. Mr. Kenniston is going to craft an alt-add or an add-alt to, to our RFP, so that anybody chosen could possibly also suggest morning programming as well. There has been some suggestion that there be a possibility of more than one vendor be chosen. We will provide for that as well, as that, as a possibility, and we have added some of the concerns that I brought forward today, that I asked Mr. Dusset to include, would be some prior experience with writing and managing grants, because as we have found out at this table, vendors who participate in this kind of a program are regularly writing small and large grants that we need to have at least knowledge and some control over. So in that request, I have asked for, to make sure that no grant be implemented by any vendor without the signature of the superintendent of schools and the mayor. There are some other issues that we spoke about. David, if you can think of anything else that we spoke about, but we will-
I'm working.
You're processing.
We were talking about evaluation of the responses.
Yeah, we did talk about a way to evaluate responses for this committee. We did, and I did make the suggestion that we have some sort of a scoring rubric. It wouldn't necessarily bind you to the highest score, as you might listen to proposals, but it would give you some idea as to how it was that you felt about the proposals coming forward in different major categories. We're going to try to come up with that as well. So I, I think that all things going well, no major disasters befalling us, should have within a two-week period and before the next school committee meeting, a draft for you to look at, and then discuss and dialogue and debate at the table for the next meeting.
Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Through the chair, some of the things that were brought up, and I, I don't mean to keep jumping into the parent advisory board report, but this was a topic at the last meeting, and it was very interesting to hear what the parents had to say. They are looking for before and after-school care, definitely. They're also looking for it to be affordable, and they are, people are making decisions based upon where they can get after-school care for their students presently, and one of the issues for some folks was a transportation issue, and so they made decisions based upon transportation considerations as well. They, they did ask, "Do we have any before-after-school programs other than the box program, which I explained to them was volunteer, but do we have a before-school program at the South School?"
Yes, through the, through the chair. We have pasos that operates 7:15 until school begins.
And is that for elementary school students?
Elementary.
Right, okay, all right, and?
I don't know if the, does the McCarthy have?
The West does not have.
No. The, the West has pasos but doesn't have a before-school program.
Right, okay, all right. And then, one of the things that the advisory board members are going to do at the next meeting is to, they're, they're just going to submit any information that they hear from other folks about some of the things that they're looking for, and I'll forward those on to you. But they, it, it was a very interesting discussion about what people are looking for in a program, so, thank you.
If there's no objection, I, I think something that we should do prior to releasing the RFP, though, in light of what Mrs. Dunn had to say, I, I think a public hearing in which we can invite anybody from the public to come and speak about what they would like to see in, in, in an after-school program, I think that would be very valuable. I want to be open and transparent during this whole process, and I would encourage us to have a community meeting, where we can invite people in to speak about what they would look for in a, in a community program. Mr. Rosignol?
I would just like to have at least a, a format, a structure, a, a working framework that we're all comfortable with before we put that out to the public, and then we can add to it with their input, if everybody's amendable to that. I, I just wouldn't want the public's input before we've had our ideas vetted first. We can, before it goes out to bid and before it goes through the whole process. I, I think once Dr. Levine and his staff come up with a framework, when he brings it before us, I think that would be the first step before we bring that, the public in. At least that's my feeling.
My feeling, I missed the last meeting and I apologize, but I think if we're going to frame the RFP, I think we should get public input. Just what Mrs. Dunn said, I think is very valuable, just from hearing from a people, some people who came to the PBA meeting, but certainly, we're talking about hundreds of students, hundreds of families, and I just think to have a, a session before we formalize the RFP, in which we invite people to come and express their opinions and, as to what would help them, and what they'd be looking for from a before-school or after-school program or both.
I absolutely agree. I just want some sort of framework first. I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Koppler?
Thank you. Just to be clear on the, the process of getting input about different programs that we implement, the parent advisory board is a valuable tool in that road. You know, what happens is each school, at their PTO meetings, they bring this up, they can discuss it, and then their representative goes back, and, and that's really what the- You know, what happens is each school, at their PTO meetings, they bring this up, they can discuss it, and then their representative goes back, and, and that's really what the role of the parent advisory board is. So, I just want, I think, you know this, we do get that information. We get it every month from them, and it's a representative from each school that takes it from their PTO. I encourage communication regarding the after-school program. I think all of us, pretty much all of us were, we were on this board when we first started the after-school program. A lot of homework, a lot of work went into putting that into place, finding out what the parents needed and wanted, and we did take that, that avenue. So, you know, I'd like to think that we are pretty well-informed, and, you know, of course, if that's your will to have an open public hearing, having people come up and speak about what they'd like, that's your will, but I just want to point out, we, we do have a way to get that information as we already have begun. And we could put it out for all the PTOs to discuss that because those are the people that it's going to impact, and we can ensure that the people that are coming to the meeting are the ones that have the most direct need and will be serviced by that program rather than anybody coming that may not.
Great. Mrs. Dunn?
I actually think that that was how we did the original RFP. There was a lot of, of research that went into formulating what the district needed for an after-school program, and I know Mrs. Kopfner did a lot of work on that. At that time, I think, parent advisory board responded as well with, with information from, from the various schools. But I honestly believe that most of what was in the original RFP will probably resonate with people right now. I think that people are still looking for, they want, they want reliable care, they want certified care, they want, you know, consistency. The hours, that was interesting, of the hours at which people wanted the programs to operate. And that, that was a wide-ranging views on, on when, when things should open and when things should continue on. The cost was interesting, too, to hear the discussion amongst the parents, just to listen to them talk about different programs that they have their children in and what their decision was based upon the actual cost of the program to their family. And it was amazing what it cost for one week per student for people to have their children go to these programs. So, I think that you will definitely get some very good information to come back to you through those parent advisory board representatives. They are a very fine group of people. They've been much, much of, much of the work that they're doing now seems very targeted with advocacy on behalf of the parents, and they've been very vocal with the different things they're bringing to the meeting. So, I think you will get some good information from them. If you did have, like, a public hearing on our RFP, is that what you normally do with an RFP, like, on the city side?
It's just optional depending on what the, what the information is that we're looking for. I just think, you know, PAB is a, is a great tool, but I know that, you know, oftentimes is not, you know, the attendance at PAB is...
It's been very good, actually. I'm very, very pleased with the folks they've had.
How many are we looking at? How many was at that last meeting?
We have, we have ten members and ten alternates, so we had eight at the last one, we had ten at the one previous to that, so it's very good attendance, actually.
I just think it would be valuable for us because I think times do change, and I certainly think people's needs and desires are different than they were several years ago when we first reviewed this. And, you know, these are important decisions that we're going to be making, and I think having a public hearing, getting public input will be valuable for us when we make this important decision. I think we could do it one night, you know, invite people to speak about what they're looking for from a program, and, you know, I think that would serve us very well.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the chairman and director superintendent to establish a night for a public meeting relative to the development of an RFP for before- and after-school programs.
Any seconds? Okay. Mr. Rosignol?
The only reason why I'm not seconding it, I'd rather see the RFP first, us develop a framework, and then establish a timeframe to have a public meeting. I just think if we establish that now, it's putting the cart before the horse. So, to me, the only reason why I didn't second it is more of a timing issue than it is anything else. I'd rather see what we're talking about before we have people comment on it. I don't want to have a, have nothing to show before, like, to me, I want to see what we're looking at, what we're establishing, what we think is the right thing, and then build on that with a public participation meet type of meeting. I think by setting a date, I, I just, I'd rather do the first part first and then set a date. That's my only two cents.
Well, I, actually, I think now that we are differing opinions, I think you have a meeting to gather public input before you put the framework together. Thank you for the support, Mr. Hockman. It's mind-boggling to me that we wouldn't have a community meeting and invite public input. I, I'm completely bewildered by that, but that's fine. That's the decision. Mr. Charis?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're taking it wrong. I don't think the committee wants, does not want a community meeting.
That was the motion that was made by Mr. Hockman that was not seconded.
I understand that, but...
So, I mean, that's the very language we're talking about, Mr. Charis.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying is, I think the timing of it, I don't, I, for one, will be welcoming a community meeting. I think what Mr. Rosignol is trying to say is that have some, somewhat of a structure and what is permissible in that RFP brought to the board. I won't be part of the board then, but would be brought to the board for them to see what would be permissible, what would be best for the community when we're having a discussion. Because during that discussion, if there was something that is mentioned that would not be permissible, that would not be allowed, or would not be best for the community and the district, that we have that communication instead of it coming in, we'll look into it, find out that it wasn't permissible, wasn't allowed, and then have to go back out and give that information. I think with Mr. Rosignol, as I took it, he was wanting it, some kind of a structure, and he said it, a framework, a small framework, what is permissible. Remember, when we developed this, this was a, a revenue stream for the district, you know? What, what is the goal of that revenue stream? I think if you had that information when you're having a discussion with the public, and I think that's very, very important. But I think it, I think the board, if I was on that board at that time, because I'm assuming this won't happen before my time is over, is that you had something, a framework of some, of some sort. I think you may have it already, but you may want to look at it. So, please don't take it as we're not supporting, because that's not my view, supporting a public meeting, because that's not, that's not how I view it. Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, that I honestly just thought that we would be doing would have, you know, a presentation from the superintendent and the business manager and, you know, that they would come to us with a proposed, some type of a proposed listing of the qualities that we're looking for. If we did that at a regular meeting and had that presentation done prior to public participation and then extended, we're, we're allowed twenty minutes of public participation at a regular meeting, if we expanded that to even a half an hour, if people were here, knew that it was an agenda item, heard the discussion and the presentation, and then if their questions weren't answered or they had additional input, at that point, they would certainly be welcome to make those comments at public participation, and we would be able to take that into consideration as well. It just seems like we've, we've done that before with, you know, when we've talked about the different, I don't know, any of the different vendors that we've, that we've sought out, you know, bus contracts. We've had discussions in the past whether to privatize different areas, things like that, and we've had people come speak of public participation on that. So, I, that's all I would envision doing, if that, if that would be amendable.
No, I just, I just disagree, but the school committee has spoken. Next item, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on a topic of their choosing? The microphone is open. We have a number of requested reports.
At your own risk.
Yeah, we have a number of requested reports here, Bay State Textiles, the monthly student attendance report, monthly teacher attendance report, and the monthly hiring status report. Any comments or questions on those reports?
Just through the chair, anything that, on the hiring status report and anything to do with personnel, Dr. Sharet is here. Anything to add to the discussion, Dr. Sharet?
Not, not really, Dr. Levine. The only thing is, is if you look at the report, you can see that we're probably as, as close to being fully staffed as, as a school department will ever be, given the date. But I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Right now, really, our openings are primarily in the area of paraprofessionals.
Thank you, Dr. Sharet, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report we've done. I think we do not have any written communications today, so move...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there is one written communication. It's, we received emails, we received an email from a parent who is concerned, but has actually spoken with Dr. Levine, concerned about the lockdown and the incident last week. These emails are included in this week's presentation, just for, I'll make a motion to receive. It's just to make it a part of this agenda so it doesn't go over into the next agenda.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. On the, on the topic, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the communication, thank you for bringing this forward, Mrs. Dunn. We all did receive this email, and I did have, have an opportunity to have a conversation with Dr. Levine, talk about public meetings. I think that there, you know, there was a tremendous amount of concern over the events that occurred earlier this, or last week, I should say, and a lot of it was due to, I think, parents' lack of familiarity with the different protocols that are in place. And, and I suggested to Dr. Levine that it might be worthwhile to have some sort of public forum in which he and maybe the mayor and the chief of police and some first-respondent personnel would be able to go through some of those protocols without, without compromising, you know, what the district does and explain what protocols are in place and maybe give parents an opportunity to hear those protocols. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, that you and I did have that conversation.
Just through the chair, I think that's a good recommendation. I'd like to explore with the mayor and the police chief first, some of the things that we may agree to that need to, need to be looked at, and once we have all of that together, that may be a, a good next step.
Thank you for your consideration.
So, subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee, anything, Mr. Hockman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The finance subcommittee had an opportunity to meet last night. We had an initial meeting with Unit C that went very well and quickly agreed upon ground rules by which we're going to operate. Unit C has meetings scheduled for negotiations for January seven, January twenty-seven, and February, February eight, all in 2016. All of those meetings either have been or will be posted for 6:00 PM here at the Kylie. Shortly after that meeting, we did have an opportunity to meet with Unit A and had a terrific meeting with Unit A. It was a very, very pleasant meeting in which we got a lot of work accomplished in a reasonable period of time. And we will continue to work with Unit A and have a meeting scheduled next for December fourteen, 2015, and then the subsequent meeting scheduled is for January five, 2016. Both of those meetings are also to occur here at the Kylie in the conference room at 6:00 PM. I do also want to report that we, as a committee, subcommittee, did have an opportunity to discuss with the administration and counsel some dates that we wanted to propose to Unit B for the beginning of negotiations with them. I'm not quite sure if those dates have been conveyed to Unit B yet, but we have provided counsel with several dates, and hopefully, we're able to come to some, some agreement on a date so that we can start moving forward with Unit B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It would be appropriate at this time for me to inform the school committee that I have begun the process of building the FY seventeen budget for your review. We have a, by policy, a February twenty-eighth deadline to get you the first draft of the budget. I intend, I hope, to meet that deadline. But we have a series of budget hearings, budget meetings with appropriate principals and department heads scheduled, actually, the week before Christmas, starting it early this year for a number of reasons. One of which is that we will all be very busy opening the Higgins, starting in the spring and over the summer. I would like to get the budget to the school committee and the mayor as soon as possible to begin discussions and hopefully lock up earlier than usual a budget number so that we can concentrate on what will be a glorious opening of the Higgins Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Parent advisory board?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The parent advisory board met last Monday. The first topic that was discussed was a follow-up on the October meeting with traffic safety. And after also meeting with Dr. Levine, I was happy to bring information back to the parents about reinstating some traffic safety committees at the elementary schools for specific schools. Happily, much of the work of the traffic safety committees in years past seems to have worked, but there are still a couple of spots where there are some problems. And some of the recommendations that the parents have come forward with and that will, you know, be, be brought through from their schools in appropriate fashion are keeping traffic patterns and traffic rules for each individual school at the individual school and making parents aware of those rules and why they're in place. Also, some of the schools may need improved signage or new signs where some, some may have, just through age, have, have left, and also some new markings in some of the parking areas. But those are all things that are going to be worked on over the next several months. Next, the parents discussed the need for before and after-school care, and they did bring forward some very, very interesting and enlightening information about the needs. And then also, one of the, one of the parent advisory board members brought forward a suggestion. He, he had requested a copy of the vision, mission, and policy statement of parent advisory board and wanted to bring that to the attention of the parents at his school. And in conjunction with his principal, they're working on making that available to all the parents. And the members of the parent advisory board talked about the, the duties that they have, how to better inform parents, and how to include parents and get more and more parents to get involved at their individual schools. All the parent advisory board members are members of their respective PTOs, so they were talking about the different ideas and different ways that the different schools have to involve parents. Some schools have a very difficult time getting a large number of parents involved, and other schools have a very easy time, or I shouldn't say easy, they just have a very great response to their requests to involve the parents. So, it was a lively discussion. It was interesting to listen to all of them trading ideas and talking about it, and they're very energized, and they want to do some more things. So, a couple of the items that they asked me to bring to the superintendent's attention, and he has already started working on this, was to see if the parent advisory board members could have signature email addresses where they might be able to receive emails from the parents at their respective schools, and actually to even have, like, a drop box where ideas could be discussed or brought forward amongst the parent advisory board members. And also to have a very visible notification on school websites so that parents at the school would know who to go to at the parent advisory board level, just if they have an idea or a concern. And then they are going to be meeting with the superintendent to find out how best they can bring ideas forward to the superintendent and to the school committee. So, the next meeting will be the third Monday of December, and it will probably be at the Higgins, but we haven't confirmed that yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building your grounds, nothing at this time. Wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll be brief. I'm in talks with Allison Kilcoyne to come before this board, and I'm hoping to have her, after the first of the year, just to come and speak about all of the... her, after the first of the year, just to come and speak about all of the fine work she's doing at the Student Health Center. That'd be ideal.
Great, thank you. Vocational, I did want to ask, I'm required to submit, resubmit the name for our representative on the, at the vocational school. I'd like to put forward Jim Leakos. Again, he's doing a great job for us, a lot of issues taking place at the vocational school, as you know, and I'd like to put him forward and resubmit his name to the vocational board for appointment, and I'd like to have a school committee vote to approve him as our representative.
Make the motion to follow the mayor's recommendation.
Second for discussion.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mr. Charist, Mr. McGinnis, for, for discussion, Mr. McGinnis?
Is this, is this something that the school committee has authorization to vote on?
I think the last time, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I thought I had asked the school committee for a vote, but I might not have.
As, as something that just kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm going to support Jim Leakos, I think you couldn't make a better selection, but I, I just don't know that this, if this is just kind of ceremonial. I don't think we have anything to do at all with a vocational school.
Through the chair, I, I think Mr. McGinnis is correct. I think this is a mayoral appointment.
Yeah, which I, I fully support, and I'd be happy to vote in the affirmative.
No, that's not the case. I couldn't remember what the protocol was last time, but I certainly want it, then I will tell you that I'm submitting Jim Leakos's name as...
Bravo. Unless, David, you wanted to...
Yeah, wait a minute, yeah. Is there another candidate?
No, if I thought I could do a better job, I'd let you know.
Special education, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that the annual Basic Rights Workshop, which is an obligation and a legal requirement of the school district, will be provided free of cost on December 1st at 7:00 PM in the Higgins Principals Conference Room. Anyone that chooses to attend or wishes to attend is welcome to attend.
Thank you. Community partnership, Mr. Charist?
Nothing at this point.
Curriculum and instruction?
Nothing at this time.
MAS-C resolutions?
Nothing at this point.
And redistricting, I think, Mr. Hockman, you'll be...
Yeah, we're actually scheduled a meeting for December 9th at 4:30, I believe, here at the Kylie.
Okay. Okay. New business will be handled in the regular course. Thank you for a good meeting. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Cappener?
Thank you. Just want to clarify for the next meeting, just to make sure that I'm correct, that we have a couple of items that were going to be on the agenda. Was, through the chair, Mr. Hockman, will we get in the redistricting report on the December 8th meeting?
No.
What was the date that we would get that?
I believe I stated that it would be before the end of the calendar year. We're meeting on December 9th to discuss the formulation of that report, and you're certainly welcome to attend the meeting.
The end of the...
I said I believe that we'll be getting it by the end of the calendar year. If that is not a drop-dead date, that may change depending upon how the formulation of the report comes along and people's schedules, and I'd like to have it done by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. And the other, I believe the other date that we had discussed was in regards to the homeschooling issue, and I think we were going to have that on, I think that date was listed as December 8th. Is that correct?
Yeah. I'd actually move for the mayor to, to withdraw the, Ed Hock's Subcommittee on Homeschooling. I think the composition of the next school committee will wind up approving all the policies that we're talking about. So I'd move to withdraw the request for a Subcommittee to even be formulated.
Did the Subcommittee begin?
We, Dr. Levine and I have done a great deal of research, but I never put together a committee.
So the policies have been reviewed? You did work on it already, so we'd be prepared for the next meeting to discuss?
I'll bring it when I'm ready to bring it forward. I'll take the matter under advisement. Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Do we only have, do we only have one meeting left for the, I know that was, I thought we had two, but do we only have one?
I believe we have December 8th.
That's it?
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment?